All right, 6 o'clock, we have our school committee on. Good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the Berlin Boilston Regional School District School Committee. I want to first start by saying thank you all for taking time out of your week again. I know this has been an extremely challenging and difficult week in many ways for many different people under different many in many different circumstances. So I truly appreciate everybody putting the time and effort in. Again, I want to just make the quick statement. If any of our participants this evening, our public comment section, like always, in our typical agendas is at the beginning of our agenda. If you do would like to make a statement and have a statement prepared, we accept three-minute statements. And if you would like to do that, please put your name and your address in the chat functionality. I'll give that a minute or two before we pass before I ask for public comments and we move on. If there are none, as an FYI, I will be after our public comment section. I will be disabling the chat functionality once again. As we get ready to move through the agenda, just a couple of things I want to just make sure we address. Again, the purpose of this evening's meeting. We've had, we had our meeting on Tuesday evening. After that, the school administration, the school committee worked through our communications negotiations with the BBA. We had our community town hall and question scenario. We have received numerous emails and communications via all different manners. What I can say for myself is I hope, I tried to in some shape or fashion respond to all of you. In many cases, it was just acknowledging that we got your email, but I wanted you to, the folks to know that we did get all of your communications. I read every single email that came in. And the school committee took all areas of interest and communication and knowledge sharing into consideration during all of our discussions over this past week. If I missed you and I didn't respond to your email, I truly apologize. I hope you understand I got a lot of emails over the last five days. Interestingly enough, the emails were, you know, and for all different reasons, pros and cons, folks from all different ways and all in, in all interests of communication. And it's the goal of this time for us is to make what's the right decision for the committee and the administration and working together with the teachers to put our district in what we believe is the safest and healthiest model to return to school. With that being said, I just want to, you know, let folks know that's what the school committee will be voting on this evening. We 100% completely hear our community, hear our teachers. I am a parent of a autoimmune student in the school system. I am concerned about all the same thing that, that many of our folks in the community are concerned about. This evening, we will be reviewing the revisions that were made. And what we will be voting on is the model that we will be going back to school with September 14. Many variables are going to change between now and then. Much of that will have to do with information that we still need to attain and acquire between now and then. You know, for example, lots of communication around what remote schooling options will look like. Trust us when we say to you, we are considering and looking at all of the greatest options to put all of our students, no matter where they fall in which category, in front of as many of Boilston and Berlin's terrific teachers. That is our goal, that's our intention. The state gives guidelines and provides a number of manners for those folks who choose to go a remote option from the beginning. We are all in a position where we have to make very important decisions. And those decisions will be for yourselves. And this is not going to be a scenario. It's unprecedented and it will not be a scenario that will be perfect for everybody. And we understand that parents and everybody will have to be making decisions for themselves and for their family and for their, in what is in the best interest for them, for their particular situation. We appreciate that, we hear that, and we will work with you along the way. With that being said, I will make one last, what I will go to now is our agenda. It's currently a public comment section of our agenda. I don't see anybody adding their name and address to our chat scenario. I will give one last call for that and then we'll move through our agenda. Okay, here, hearing no comments, moving through to item before in our agenda, which is our consent agenda, which is the open meeting minutes from our August 4th, Tuesday night's meeting. Do I have a motion for our consent agenda, please?
This is Cliff, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
One second.
Cliff, thank you, Keith, thank you for a second. We're going to go to our roll call vote. Angela? Lori?
Aye.
Cliff?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
And it's an aye from me as well. Thank you very much. Communications, do we have any communications from anyone on our school committee this evening? Hearing none, we will move through our agenda. We have the report section of our agenda. The purpose of tonight, you know, I think, I think I mentioned earlier, is for Jeff and his administration to provide us an update. I think it will be mostly directed around the hybrid model, which we shared on Tuesday night, which was going to be modified after negotiations with the teachers and working with our community and list our community's concerns and interests. And I think Jeff is going to provide us some updates on that. And then we will have our school committee discussion. Jeff, I'll pass it on to you. Jeff, you're on mute.
And that concludes my report for tonight. And so Tuesday, we had a school committee meeting in which I, we as a team presented a full-in model of hybrid and remote. And we each had a piece of that. And so there, we said that in my closing statement, I said that what we were going to do is we were going to take a look at the model that we intended to open with. And that we were going to meet with the association. You know, we were going to rework the hybrid model. And that that was the model we were going to intend to open with. And the hybrid model that we looked at was one that was originally in the plan. So again, just to summarize, when, when the Department of Education was starting to look at ways to reopen schools, the only thing that existed was six-foot social spacing. And so we started building the model based on that. There was no full-in, there was no, it was just a cohort style hybrid. So it existed in the plan before, so we didn't have to actually go back and rework this. It's something that everybody had taken a look at. So we worked with the association this week and came up with what we think is going to be good compromise for our students and our families, our staff to open up with. I'm going to ask for two votes tonight. One is on this hybrid model that we're going to talk about right now. And the other is on the corresponding calendar. You voted on one last, last Tuesday. I forgot to pull that out, it needed some changes. And, and actually, the association made some changes that I, that I would have missed, but I thought they were very good. So we put those in there, I'll talk about that also. But so let's, let's talk about the hybrid now. Here's the framework of it, and Carol, Karen will jump in if they need to. It's based on an A and B cohort. So instead of having all of the students in at one time, you have half the students in at any given time. So basically, on Monday and Tuesday, you'll have half of the students, that will be cohort A. On, on Wednesday, I'll just, on Monday and Tuesday, cohort A will be in. On Thursday and Friday, cohort B will be in in-person, okay? When cohort A is in front of the teachers, cohort B will be doing independent remote learning and vice versa. On Wednesday, that will also be a remote day for all students. That'll be the one day we can bring them together, at least remotely. But for the teachers, it'll be a day of getting lessons together and planning. We still have, we still have the same amount of meetings we have to do for special ed and those kind of things, they have to be done. So we're hoping, there's not a lot of time on those other days to do that, that kind of thing. So we're hoping to put those on that, that Wednesday, that middle day, to not take away from instruction time any more than we have to. As you know, in a regular week, regular school day, teachers are always being pulled away for those kind of meetings. So we're hoping to put that on, those all on Wednesday. And that was the, one of the, the changes that the association wants. It said, can we have all our professional development on Wednesday too? We hadn't looked at that before and it's, it really is the perfect place to look at it. So that's the basic framework of this. It'll look a little bit different in the high school than in the elementary school. There is a plan in there for the high school, you'll see some course numbers in there. Those will change. I know Diane and Sally have been working on that. So we just wanted to give you a, a framework for what a typical day would look like for a student. But as they, as they work this a little more, what parents get in the next couple of weeks, high school, middle school parents, will be the exact configuration of those courses. This hybrid model, it does a couple of things that the other hybrid model doesn't. It provides the six-foot spacing, six-foot plus actually. So makes it a little safer in the classroom for our students and our teachers. And with only half the students in the building, it's also safer in the common spaces. So lunchtime would be a lot easier to get the kids at a safe distance because obviously they can't have their masks on. It doesn't, you know, nothing's going to be 100%, but this is certainly going to give us the spacing we need to provide the maximum amount of safety for everybody. It also makes transportation easier. We could have done it in the other model, we could actually go all in and still do it as long as some kids didn't come back. If they, if, if kids did come back in an all-in model, we'd have to loop the buses around. So some kids would be late. It makes the transportation a lot easier. One of the questions and the concerns that came up with parents is, you know, I'll make a commitment to drive my, my child to school, but there are some days where I just can't do it, something comes up. Can I, can I get, can, can my son and daughter have a ride to school? Like, can they ride the bus? In the other model, that would have been tough because we would have been right to the lim, right to the limit. And this one, we'll work out the numbers, but we will probably have a couple extra seats. So if we have those emergencies and the parent calls and, and they have a doctor's appointment, have something they have to get to, can't pick up their child, we'll be able to put the child on the bus. So it works out there too. One of the things we took out is in the other plan, we had the, we had reconfigured the class capacity and we based it on 100% of students in. So I've asked the principals if they could, as early as they can next week, rework those capacities with the six foot, with the same calculation. All they're going to do is if they had 15 kids in the class, now they're going to put an A. And they're going to work out how many, how much space is left over. They'll do, it'll be the same calculation. We'll, we'll post it so the, so families and staff can see exactly what the spacing will be in the classrooms. And we'll probably actually post the classroom numbers. So they'll be able to see what the, what the, what the spacing will look like. But it'll be, it'll certainly be better than the last time. There were a couple of last-minute additions. I do want to mention them because they were, we, we officially negotiated Tuesday and Wednesday. And so we got a kind of a late call from the association, said, would you mind putting these additions in? I did go ahead and make them because I didn't have any problem with them. But I'm going to mention them in case the, the school committee has an issue with them. We can, we can talk about it now. As long as in terms of personnel and staffing, they wanted a line put in. This is on page 11, they wanted a line put in that said, at no time will any staff or student be required to be in the building if it is unsafe to return. That's based on, I, I asked that all the teachers to be in the building during remote learning. So and I think there's, there seems to be a lot of confusion about remote learning to begin with. If we have to leave the building because there's a case of COVID, everybody will be quarantining for 14 days. So nobody will be back in those buildings. So I think it was just a miscommunication. I had no intention of bringing them back until it was safe. And also sometimes in those conditions, we'd have, if there was actually a case, it takes some time to get those buildings clean. And I wouldn't want anybody back in the building while it was being done or even directly after it was being done, if there were any chemicals or anything. A lot of the times you need to, with the disinfectant system we use, usually we have, if it's a tabletop, we spray it and then later we go back with the clean water and wash it. So it takes a little time. So in that case, nobody would be in the building for 14 days except whoever's cleaning. So that was that line. And then one of the other things I'm going to require this year is, just because it's such an idea, and I don't usually do this because I, it's easy for me to just go in the classroom and see what's going on. I've asked the principals to collect lesson plans and take a look at them, sign off on them and then, and then send them to me. And so there was a question about the format of these that we were going to have, you know, some zany template that was sent out and that was, that's how it was going to be. So they wanted a line in there that said, "The format of these lesson plans will be decided in conjunction with the building principal." That suits me just fine. So I will let the principals decide. I think they've already started having any discussion, so it doesn't matter. I just, I just needed to get a feel for what's going on in the classrooms, especially with the way this, the week is broken. I like to, I want to know what's going on when the students are in front of the, the teachers and what they do on those other days. Because remember, under this plan, we don't have a double set of teachers. It would be nice to have them, but we don't. And this is one of the confusion parents had in this hybrid model. If the teachers have a cohort in front of them on Monday and Tuesday, then they have a different cohort on, on Thursday and Friday. Well, they can't be teaching remotely if they have students in front of them. So even though half the students aren't there, the teachers still have a group in front of them. So I think maybe one of the misconceptions about these cohorts is that there would be teachers on the day, teaching their children on the days that their children are not in school face-to-face with their cohort. And it's just not possible. So we'll see how that, we'll see how that goes. But I really just need to get a, I really need to get a feel for what that looks like. And if I don't see that, it'll be difficult for me. So those are the last changes. I don't know if this, I hope the school committee doesn't have any issues with that because I didn't. Carol, did you want to, I know we worked on this to, and Karen also. Is there anything in there that you wanted to, that we, any changes, last-minute changes that you thought needed to be talked about? It's a, it's pretty clear cut, this, this kind of plan.
I'm just scrolling through, I don't see anything that we hadn't talked about. We made sure we put in, I would just, we went back and we put in about the masks being pre-K through.
That was a change.
Pre-K through five in the elementary school, so that was a change.
The only thing I'd add, Jeff, is that I think everybody needs to know that it's a working document, that we keep getting new guidance from the state. And as we get new guidance, we have to update it. So they're voting on the plan, but the, the document itself will need to be updated as we go forward.
So that's, that's pretty much, that's, that's pretty much it. And I don't know if any of the school committee have questions for us on it, anything they don't understand. Again, I would ask that you vote on the plan tonight pending further guidance. So there may be a few things in there, we've gone through it a number of times, but then there's still little things that pop up, so. And tomorrow, somebody could say, you're not going into buildings. The governor could say we're closing the buildings and then all of this is off the table. So we don't know that stuff.
A couple of things I'd like to add. First, for the other school committee members, Angela, Angela and I were the school committee members who partook in our work with our teachers. And, and I would, I would never, I don't want to ever speak for the teachers. I will speak for myself and the school committee. I found the process to be a wonderful process. It always is. I think one of the, the awesome things that we have here is a great teachers' union and a great school committee that work so well together. And going into it, I think we completely understood and heard, I don't want to use the term fear, but the concern around the health stuff. And we immediately addressed the two major underlying issues that Jeff and Carol talked about, which was the six-foot distancing and the required masks for all. And I, I won't speak for, like I said, I won't speak for the teachers, but I think that helped get us off in a really good position of a comfort level. Again, I don't believe it's perfect for everybody. And I, and I'm, I'm sure there are some other things that we will work through. But I just want to let the school committee know that, just sort of how the process went and so that they know kind of from a negotiating standpoint, how the, the overall feel of the negotiation was. I think it's important for the rest of you to, for the school committee perspective, to understand that. So that's one thing I wanted to mention. The other thing I wanted to mention was that Jeff and I haven't communicated a lot on this. But again, we're going to vote this evening on the framework, right? We continue to allow that this is an evolving situation. There are a number of variables that are going to happen between now and the start of school that are going to make this a document and a process that will, will probably change. What that means, I'm sure that's going to even open up more questions and concerns from parents and families and community members. And what I want to encourage you, don't stop asking your questions. One of the things I'm going to work with Jeff and someone in administration on is continuing to determine a way to address those questions. Ultimately, I think right out the gate, what I'd like to do is start an FAQ page possibly. The new revised plan will get posted to the website for parents' reviews. And then I'm going to work with some folks to see if we can condense a lot of the terrific questions and concerns that we have gotten from parents and create an FAQ page or document that can be updated as we go to the sense that, okay, you know, this has changed today and the governor said this, or the health went in this direction. How does that affect things? So that's one of the things I want to do. So I want to encourage you to keep asking your questions. It's your right and it's important for you guys to do that. So that was just another thing I wanted to add. But does the, does the school committee have any other questions or, or comments currently, Jeff, or anyone on, on the administration?
No, I just know it's an ongoing process. And I, I like how you guys keep reiterating that this is not set in stone. So everything's going to keep changing. That's the only comment I have.
This is Angela. I, I was wondering because I just wanted to make sure that, so even though we're voting on our intent to open school on the 14th with the recommended hybrid, if we vote that way, we're not bound to it through the whole school year. And with that being said, with this case of potentially having to go to fully remote, the first plan we got had a really detailed fully remote section. And I'm wondering if we could put that into the document that's posted on the website so that everyone knows in the community what the remote, fully remote schedule would look like if we had to go that route at some point during the school year. It was really nice and detailed. I didn't see it in the hybrid plan that's posted.
Angela, what would like to do if we could? We didn't want to confuse things tonight. We worked hard to get the hybrid model negotiated and get that set for the opening. And what we'll do is, we, you know, a full-in is a full-in. I mean, there's, there's, you read that, there's not a lot to do there. And the remote, we did work on, there wasn't a lot of changes in it. We did actually talk about some of that with the association that this. And what we'll do is we'll have the committee vote on that separately. And we'll also have you vote on a full-end plan also. And see, one of the things that I think the, the committee and the, in the community has to be aware of is that we might need to go from one to another in a day's notice. So we should have them all voted on to start the year off sometime in September, just in case we have to do it. We don't have to then do an emergency vote to then go to the next plan. They'll already have been voted on and they will be the same thing as this. There'll be works in progress, but at least you have taken a vote. It gives us that permission to move from one to the next. So we'll have those, in September, we'll have, we'll have the, a remote for you to take a look at and, and a full-in. Not, not that I envision any, either of those to stop, but you never know.
So Jeff, you just mentioned that you'd be asking for a vote on those in September. And I'm comfortable with that, but I suppose it's not inconceivable that before September, we'd be told we have to be remote.
If we have, if it's a governor's order, we, we have to close, something like that. If the governor, you know, then we have to close. But this is an emergency meeting tonight, we could have one, we'll have the plan ready if something happens. And so we would still be able to do it. I don't envision it, the, the cases are pretty low unless there's some kind of spike and we have to do it, we will. We need, you know, we need a, we could sort of just put the final touches on it anyway.
Right, great, thanks.
If it's not, not look good for a reopening, I'll certainly suggest that we have a vote.
Sorry, it was rude. Jeff, just so I think it, you know, like sometimes I think we, we get talking and we probably confuse things a little bit. But just so we may be clear of any confusion. And in more clarity came out around this recently, yesterday, whatever it was, with the commissioner and what's being presented. What's, what's required to the Department of Education is, is three models. But what's asked for is a vote on our recommended back-to-school model, correct?
For, for now, yep.
Yeah, okay. So you know, there is, I just don't want to put any misconceptions out there that were, that due date was one, three guaranteed models. That's not, that's not what we're doing. We're voting this evening on your recommended model for, for reentry.
Right. And the due date changed yesterday, actually.
The 14th, yeah, I saw that.
On the 17th, if you really have a problem.
Well, I'm really grateful that you made the changes because I, I feel so much happier being able to at least send the kids to school, at least twice a week in person. I, I know the kids will be thrilled about that. I think most kids will. Also, you know, I, I'm mostly thrilled for like band and chorus. I, you know, just being able to be outside when the weather is decent and, and that in-person instruction in those particular areas in, in particular. So thank you for your willingness to, to rework the hybrid plan. And I have to say, I, I didn't like the first one, so thank you.
Thank you.
I've been following the, there is a document from a school committee perspective that gets tracked following what other districts are doing. What uh other districts are doing and I, and I went back and forth on this topic, kind of beginning of last week, just. Wondering if, you know, cuz a lot of folks um. Wondering why we, we felt like we were a little bit behind on what we were doing and. At the time, part of me said, well, like sometimes I like being behind, giving yourself more time and, um you know, sometimes I think it's good to. Um you know, be and allow for folks to prepare and whatnot, so I've been following about fifty, we're, we're gonna be about right in the middle, about fifty percent. Of districts have reported or voted on at this point which model they will. Go back to school with, so we're right in that fifty percentile in terms of time wise, so I think that's a good spot, I think we. You know, I think we were careful, I did our due diligence, but at the same time, uh we're. Getting a little bit ahead of the game and allowing folks to prepare, so uh I was happy to see that when I saw the updated numbers uh this afternoon.
And I was, I don't wanna put um Carol on the spot, but um Carol did a really nice job um giving her point of view. When we were talking with the teachers this week about the benefits that students have being with their teacher in person. Carol, do you mind kind of sharing that a little bit with the rest of the committee, I didn't get a chance to hear you the other day?
Sure, and I just wanna preface that too by just saying that. I think, Jim, we landed it kinda in the middle with this because the teachers worked so hard on those committees to put so much detail in the plan. That probably other districts hadn't tackled yet, um so I think that that's probably why we were a little bit behind. Felt like that and getting the plans ready, but no, I, I was just saying the other day that, you know. It just really means a lot to the children and I think, and certainly to the teachers to build a relationship in coming back. Regardless of how, how, how we land after this, I think the time to come in in the beginning of the year and be together. And see your teacher and see your children, see your students in the classroom, get to know them and build that community is so important. So just to have those two days, I think means everything, and I have heard that expressed afterward from a number of teachers as well that. That they're looking forward so much, I know they're all looking forward so much to, to getting to, to know their students, that they might, they. In the springtime, they had a chance to have known the families, known the kids for, for almost a full year. And um they wouldn't have had this opportunity to be together, so. I hope I said that the same way I did.
Yes, pretty close, thank you.
One of the things I wanted, I meant, I meant to address uh earlier, uh the beginning of the meeting was, I didn't get, I, and I know I wasn't. On the town hall last evening, um but I did uh watch it in full. And actually, some of the pieces I went back and watched again and. I just wanted to thank uh the community and everybody for participating in that last night. I thought all of the questions and comments were extremely thoughtful. And I thought that what a terrific job everybody did being respectful of the process and everybody else's time and all that good stuff. So I thought that was terrific and it made me encouraged to the, to think that, you know, if we need to, we could do that again. Um if we had a position, we could do that again because I felt like it just was an important part of the process and I wanted to just thank. Uh all the parents who joined and did that, and I also wanna remind folks uh to continue, to try to continue to be that way, I think. Remain thoughtful uh and respectful of everybody's time, everybody's uh positions. You know, like I've said a lot is, everybody's gonna make a personal decision for their family. Um we need to be respectful of that and I encourage everybody to try to remain supportive and productive as we. Uh move through this process, but thank you all for that time last night.
And I do wanna mention that town hall, that came from our parent group, that idea to do that, the, the one that was working on the plan, so. I do wanna thank them for that.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Jeff.
Jim, do you want me to go over the um, the calendar also?
Yeah, why don't you quickly touch on that so that way we could just uh move to the two votes?
Okay, good, um so usually we have uh August twenty seventh is an opening day. And then the twenty eighth is a professional development day. Um but the MTA uh negotiated with the commissioner, a ten day delay in the start, so. We haven't made a lot of changes, so the twenty seventh will stay exactly the same as it always did, that would just be an opening day that we, we, we normally have. Then starting the twenty eighth through um September eleventh, those will be the ten days that were negotiated. Uh between the commissioner and the MTA. The August twenty eighth day, we took that and we moved it to June fifteenth. Normally wouldn't put a PD day out there, but because it's such an unusual year, we thought it'd be a good day for the teachers to sort of recap. Work with the principals, recap the year. We don't know how this year is gonna go, so just to have that day uh at the end of the year. That's, except for just moving some PD days around, nothing got lost, nothing got uh gained. We moved some, we tried to move as much as we could, professional development day to Wednesday. On um recommendation from the association, which we hadn't done before, so that was good. Other than that, um everything stayed the same, we just had to factor in the ten days. That's pretty much it.
Okay, any questions from, from the committee? On the calendar? Okay. With that being said, let me pull back up my agenda and just make sure I don't miss anything. Where did my agenda go?
And I do wanna say one thing, I just, I, I don't wanna forget it, those ten days, we had to put it up at, at the front, you couldn't bank them. If we could, I probably would have maybe put them at the end and, and, and um. I, I may have put them at the end, but the commissioner said we cannot bank those, we had to use them up front.
Okay. Okay, uh just a reminder for school committee, uh before we get to the votes, uh our next meeting is. Uh on the eighteenth. Uh I will be working on the agenda for that meeting uh with Jeff and Christie, I'm assuming um beginning of next week. And um if anybody has any specific they'd like to see on that agenda, please uh reach out to me sooner rather than later. Uh so that I can talk to Jeff and Christie about that. Okay, uh business items, we are uh at our vote. Uh so Jeff, I just wanna make sure I word this correctly. You're, we're gonna look for a motion to approve the hybrid model. The York, that the superintendent's recommended hybrid model reentry plan.
Now both, yeah, both who approved the hybrid model as written, pending further guidance.
Uh do I have a committee member that would like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion, it's Angela.
This is Cliff, I'll second it.
Thank you, Angela, thank you, Cliff. Any other questions or concerns before I take the roll call vote? There are none, okay, uh Angela?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Cliff?
Aye.
An eye from myself to share as well. I advise, Kristy.
Yes, I have it down, thank you.
Okay, uh could I please have a motion to approve the revised BBRSD twenty twenty one school year calendar?
So moved.
Uh this is Cliff, I'll second it.
Thank you both, roll call, Angela?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Cliff?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
An eye from me as well? All right, thank you, everybody, that was uh. Thank you for his participation over this last week, I hope uh everybody picks a couple evenings off and watches a movie or something, but uh. Do we have any other, anything, any other business items from school committee that you'd like to address before we adjourn?
I, I have one, this is Angela, so I'm not planning to run for reelection in the fall. So I just wanted to announce that publicly, so if there's anyone in the audience or anyone on the committee. Who knows someone in Berlin that would be interested, I don't know if now's a good time to ask or not. So if everyone's mad at me for my decision, maybe they'll be like, yes, I'm gonna run, I can do a better job than that girl. So that might be good, or it might be like, oh my god, I would hate to make, have to make that decision, so anyway, um. I, it's, it's a great committee to work with, a great advent team, so I just encourage anyone who's interested to please run and. Please call me or email me and I'd be happy to discuss more about what's involved.
Thank you, Angela. I'm sorry that you're uh running, I must have done, not, not done a good job, you're running away from me.
You're doing an excellent job, it's just time for fresh, 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 uh, fresh perspective.
Thank you, uh. We'll be, we'll have a few months to uh acknowledge all your accomplishments during your extremely ten year time on, on the board, which has been. Pretty amazing, so we'll, we'll get into that stuff later on. Uh anybody else, any other comments? Okay, you, you bring up a good point though, uh that is a good, good topic and it'll be getting addressed more in the future. The school committee will have uh the election for school committee when we became, when we became a district, uh we moved to a statewide. Election model, so uh school committee elections will now be in November versus uh your standard town elections. Uh in May in the malls, that will change, uh cuz it's our first time around, we're working through some challenges uh in. Getting the election process moving going, I'm working with both uh. Town clerks administrators from both towns to make sure we get that all uh figured out, uh so hopefully we'll be putting something out soon that. Uh outlines and details of nomination process and timeframes and dates and that stuff, I'm hoping to have that to everybody shortly. I had to get a little bit detracted from or, or separate from that a little bit as we work through this stuff this week, but uh. That'll be back on my uh priority list uh starting next week, uh some more to come, so yes, uh folks. And just so everybody knows, that is uh every school committee member will be up for election in November. Uh with our move to a district, uh one of those processes that goes into place is we uh all. Uh if continue to plan, try and will need to rerun for election, so all six seats for school committee. Will be on the ballot in November, so uh anybody's interested. Um start to consider, if anybody has any questions, I would be more than happy to speak with anybody. That's how I got involved, it all started with um conversation and some discussions with some previous members and. Uh it's an extremely rewarding experience, so if you're interested, I'm more than happy to talk to anybody, so. And I'm sure any other member would do the same, but uh thanks for bringing up that topic, Angela, thank you. With that being said, could I please have a motion to adjourn the Berlin-Boilston Regional Transition School Committee?
So moved.
Thank you both, roll call, Angela?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Cliff?
Aye.
Keith?